All right, I'd like to call to all of the regular meeting of the Abington School Committee here on Wednesday, August 31st, 2022, in the Abington Middle High School Library. The time is 6:30 PM, and I'd like to ask if everybody could just stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Start off hearing your visitors, anybody, okay, Melanie, thank you. Next up is our reading and approval of the minutes from our last meeting of last school year on June 21st. I'm looking for a motion to approve whenever.
Make the motion. I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Reporter of the director, the new Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Dr. Chris Basta.
All right, that's me. So, hey, thanks for having me here in a different capacity. I want to thank the school committee and the members of the administration and the interview committee for trusting me and for honoring me with continued service to Abington. So, I'm excited for the work that has to be done and look forward to working with you and the entire Abington community. The thing I'm reporting on tonight before we move to summer is about elementary professional development this year to keep you and the community in the loop. Both elementary schools, Woodsdale and Beaverbrook, this year will be focusing on improving small group instruction by using student data. They will accomplish that in a combination of professional development and coaching, working with their building leadership as well as TLA. So, they will focus on literacy, but the learning that they'll be doing applies to all small group instruction. So, they can transfer that work that they're doing to math, to social studies, to science. You might recall in the spring, or maybe the last time I was here, we talked about at Beaverbrook, there was a curriculum review committee last year looking at phonics, and they recommended Project Read for grades one and two, and Lively Letters for kindergarten. So, this year, that's another focus of the professional development at Beaverbrook. Staff have started receiving training and unpacking those resources together and planning as teams to implement those this year with the hope of improving our student reading outcomes. Any questions about Lively Letters or Project Read? They're both phonics programs that are systematic and explicit.
And where do they come from, the phonics? Are they...
They're programs.
They're programs?
That we purchased, yeah.
Like, okay, that you guys purchased. And who's doing the coaching?
They, so the coaching that the teachers at both schools are receiving is not specific to any program. The teachers at Beaverbrook and K are receiving their training through, directly through the company, mostly in the form of webinars. And then they also have, I believe, online support that they can reach out to, and the same thing for Project Read.
Awesome.
Many teachers at, in both groups, kindergarten and first and second, are familiar already with prior versions of Project Read and Lively Letters. So, for a lot of them, it's sort of a refresher, and here's what's new. And then for our newer teachers, it's an introduction.
Is there any correlation between Lively Letters? Is that like an early component to Project Read? Or, I'm very familiar with Project Read, I just, I'm wondering if the language set is the same so that it's a continuation of services on that?
So, they are not related, they're not correlated, but they're focusing on the continuum of skills to build phonics knowledge for students. So, the team of teachers, including special educators who investigated, they thought this was what was best for the students at Beaverbrook. Any other questions?
One more. So, I also know that there was discussion at the Woodsdale level last year about a definite need for a continuation of a focused phonics, either a program or a contingent in there. Is this going to be able to wrap up there as well, or have, has anyone looked explicitly at that yet?
I do not know about what Woodsdale has looked at as far as phonics, or where they are with that. I do know that the very next item we're going to talk about is, Woodsdale is pausing on the professional development. They started in the spring of last year with math, so that they continue to focus on literacy this year. And there will be an elementary committee for both schools to look at literacy's next steps.
Okay.
So, that will probably be part of that process for Woodsdale. What are we doing about phonics, especially in third grade, but also for some fourth graders? And then there's a larger discussion that's happening really pre-K to 12th grade about math, and where we are, and where are we going, and how are we getting there? So, there'll be more updates about that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right.
Chris, before you go, I just want, I want to say congratulations to, congratulations on the job. Thank you for accepting it, looking forward to everything you're able to do, and left Beaverbrook in good hands, better hands than you founded him. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Chris. I'll be back in 30 seconds.
Reporter of the Director of Student Services, Dr. Robbins, if you wanted to go ahead.
Hey, everyone, thanks for having me. So, as you'll hear tonight, we actually had a robust sort of range of programs available to Abington students over the summer. And I'll just be reviewing the first two, which pertain to the Extended School Year, which is a special education program, and then a program that we've, oh, speak up, yep, and then a program for English learners as well. So, first, I'll be speaking about the Extended School Year, which is designed for students with disabilities. So, as I mentioned prior to Extended School Year, student, Extended School Year is available to students with disabilities who are vulnerable to regression in the skills that they've learned over the year. A number of these students who, over the 11 weeks of summer, will have lost a lot of the skills that they gained over the school year. And then when they arrive in September, they'll be, they will, they will have lost skills, and they'll have to spend a disproportionate amount of time recouping those skills, which would just kind of create a bigger gap between themselves and some of their general ed peers. So, that's why Extended School Year programs exist, and is part of a federal and state requirement. So, the way we approach the Extended School Year is, one, to prevent regression, so that means just more practice with those skills, so that they don't lose them over the summer, but then also to take the opportunity to prepare them for the year ahead. So, during the summer, this provides a nice opportunity for us to trial some new intervention arrangements for our students. So, there are times where we think a student may be ready for like less, a less restrictive setting, so to be able to participate in programs with more peers, with a little bit less support. So, we'll use some of the summertime to trial those arrangements. And it's also a nice opportunity to work, for individual students to work through particular problems they might have. For example, we were able to help a number of students who struggled with school avoidance to kind of get into a habit of coming into a building, being among their peers, and having success. So, that was, that's just sort of a nice feature of the program. Additionally, just because it's summer, and a lot of students would be, prefer to be elsewhere, staff are really encouraged to make it just sort of a lively, fun opportunity for students. And I think all of our teachers stepped up to that request, and just to highlight a few examples, in our Life Skills Program, we had, we had students go to the library just for a field trip, and just sort of explore the offerings there. We also had some of those students go to Timberlands as well, just for a bowling trip. But of course, we use each moment for instruction, you know, like what are, what are the social expectations, how, you know, how to, how can we count up our bowling tally, and things like that? So, it's a fun activity, but education's sort of integrated in there. And then in our preschool, on Thursdays, there was a music appreciation on the playground, where they were just, a number of instruments were shared with them, so that they could kind of explore different things, like recorders and drums and things like that. So, just some of the details of the summer program are that we had 21 certified staff members, and about 90% of those were actually Abington staff members, which is great, so they already know the students. And then we had 18 support staff, so these are paraprofessionals, who just help support students in participating in the bigger program. The grade levels that are served, so it actually primarily focuses on grades pre-K through eight. And the content is driven by students' IEP goals and objectives. As we get on in grades, the focus really is ELA and math, for the most part, but students' individual goals are woven in there. We had 114, I'm sorry, 114 students participate, 131 were eligible. So, a good proportion of eligible students did participate. It runs for four hours a day, four days a week, four weeks, just a 4-4-4 in July, and transportation is IEP-dependent. And then to just summarize quickly, our English learner education's summer program. So, this is a nice opportunity that we're able to offer thanks to ESAR funding. So, the big idea of this program is to work with English learners who are, whose language proficiency is at the Level One or Level Two kind of status or level, which means just sort of beginning or emerging level of proficiency. So, students who are, who are at the Level One, students who are qualified as Level One would get more focused language support, and students who are at Level Two were able to participate in a more activity-oriented experience. Over the summer, all of these students get a reading, writing, and speaking opportunity. And just sort of one nice variation that we were excited to see was at the high school level, the teacher focused on having the students solve a crime by like reading through, reading through clues, engaging in constructive dialogue, asking critical questions, and just like using that as a vehicle for really practicing English language. So, we thought that was kind of a fun variation on how to build language skills over the summer. Some quick details are that we had four classrooms running, so four lead teachers, and at the, at the K to two level, we had one paraprofessional available to support. The grades that were served were K through 12, and of the 45 invited students, 30 participated. And it followed the same schedule as the special ed program, so four hours per day, four days per week for four weeks. And students were able to access bus transportation, and most of the students actually participated in that. So, those are just quick summary details of the English learner program and special education program. I'll turn it to Chris to explain the summer boost program and other activities we had. But before I do, just want to see if there are any specific questions about these programs.
James, I have any question about it, but just, I think I've said this probably every year, but I'm gonna say it again. So, my, the summer, the Extended School Year program, my son's benefited from it probably, I don't know, I'm gonna guess about eight years now. It's great, it's kept him, it's a wonder for him, I don't like, I don't want to think where he'd probably be today if he wasn't able to get there, through there. So, thank you for continuing to do that, and I think it's, the English language program is a great way to use some of the ESAR funds too, so thank you.
Thank you, Chris. That's great to hear about your son.
Great, and congratulations on the number of students that you actually had attend. As someone who's worked with ESY programs, I know those numbers can be very low.
Right.
And sometimes it's a struggle to serve the students who need it most, so whatever magic you worked, thank you, and thank you to the staff who made it all happen, because that's great to see.
Well, great, yeah, thanks for that feedback. And yeah, we were just careful to invite the students who were most likely to benefit from it, so I think that explains sort of the higher number of students who attended versus who was eligible.
Thank you, James. James, are you gonna come back up to do the summer homeschool?
Yes. To this brief interlude.
Yeah, no problem.
So, the theme continues about maintaining some of the growth that students achieve during the year during the summer with the next couple of programs. We talked in May, maybe, I think it was May, about a new program that we were piloting using ESAR funds at Beaverbrook this summer, and that was for rising second grade students who were two or more levels below our reading benchmark, and/or identified by their teacher as a student who would benefit from focused intervention in the area of reading. So, similar to what Dr. Robbins was talking about, it's a more casual, laid-back atmosphere for students, they're smaller groups, and they were able to focus on learning through play-based activities that focused on different aspects of literacy. Move to the next screen. As far as the number of folks involved, we had two certified staff, we had four support staffs, so there were two paraprofessionals in each classroom. We had invited about 40 students, and 21 participated. Transportation was not provided. And initially, the program was going to be, we had room to invite 72 students by having two sessions a day, about an hour and a half each with a break in between. And then based on the number of students who actually fit the criteria that we were looking for, and the availability of staff, we reduced that number to 40 invitations and made the day a bit longer. So, we mirrored the summer, the ESY program hours and days, so four hours a day, four days a week for four weeks. Any questions about summer boost? Yeah?
Any feedback from those who didn't come as to why? If it was 21 out of 40, it seems like that was only about half.
Yes, for some people, it was transportation, for some people, it was vacation plans.
Okay.
And I think possibly because this was a new program, people weren't necessarily, they didn't have it on their radar.
And when you said some were vacation plans, was it necessary for them, if they were gonna take one of the spots, did they have to commit to all of the weeks, or could they have done some of the weeks?
We initially asked people to commit to the whole four weeks. Because the spots were pretty in demand, we thought. And then as we saw people were declining, we started opening it up, saying, if you can come for just one week, your child will benefit. So, there were several families who did that.
Did you have any exit evaluations before the kids? I'm just curious to see, you know, what kinds of gains were potentially...
Yes, we don't have those for you yet.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah. With, you know, the program ended, and teachers took their vacations, and now they're back. So, we need a little bit more time to pull that together, but I will get that to you, because it is good feedback for how the program did.
I love this program too, along with the ELA program, I'm sorry, the ELE program. What did I just say? ELL, I'm sorry. So, I just wanted to ask, who paid for this? Was this from ESAR funds as well?
This was ESAR also, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And then a more traditional summer school program that we've had in Abington for a while, our Summer Academy, focusing on credit recovery and promotion requirements. Meg Tomlin was our Summer Academy Director this summer, and while she was there, she also helped out supervising a bit with ESY, with the ELE program, with summer boost, pretty much everything that was going on. If there was a need, Meg stepped in, and students had a really, a good experience. There were, if I move to the next slide, it's helpful to talk about the numbers, 50 students participated. There were classes focused on middle school humanities and STEM, high school Algebra I, II, geometry, you can read all of those, I don't need to read those to you. But out of the 50 students, 46 of them earned the credit that they were there for. So, that's a pretty good percentage. And their sessions were a bit shorter, but the days did mirror ESY also. And there was free transportation for 25 students. There was free transportation available to all students, 25 students availed themselves of it, that's a better way to say it.
Dr. Basta, I guess, did everything take place in this building for the summer?
Yes, everything was here, and that started two years ago, or a year ago, from, there was construction at Beaverbrook and Woodsdale, and so everything located here, and it worked out so well that I think we're gonna try to keep every program...
Even the boost, the boost program was here too?
Yeah. Everything was here.
That's great.
So, the four students with the, that didn't make it, did they not show up, or...
It was a combination of withdrawing, not showing up, and being removed, I would say.
Thank you. It's unfortunate.
But the vast majority did really well. And our last look at summer in Abington focuses on enrichment. We had again this summer our summer instrumental camp, as well as our strength and conditioning program for athletes. So, we had our musicians and our athletes participating in programs that extended their learning and motivation and engagement from the school year, especially in light of what the last few years have been like for sports and for music. So, both programs were very successful, the students and families were very happy to be able to continue their good work during the summer with our staff. As far as the numbers go for both of those, 52 students participated in the instrumental program, 20 students participated in the athletic program, and I have a long list of people to thank. Do you have any questions about the instrumental or athletic program? No? Okay. So, the last thing for me on this is to first thank the school committee, and Mr. Schaefer, and Dr. Michella, and Dr. Robbins for supporting all the summer programming here in Abington. And then going down the list, Mr. Bourne, Mr. McCurton, Mr. Servino, Servino, sorry, Mr. Shannon, Ms. Tomlin, Ms. DePrey, and all of our teachers and paraprofessionals who worked during the summer. It was very successful, and the children of Abington benefited, but it wouldn't have happened without all of those people, including you. So, thank you. Any last questions?
Thank you. I echo the thank yous to everybody you mentioned as well, that we all do, so.
Thank you.
Congratulations, good job.
James, you had to come do the, I'm blanking.
Homeschooling, thank you. Yep, so I, and just, I had one last item, and that is just that a number of families in our community elected to pursue home education programs for their children. And the idea here is that this allows the family itself to provide instruction, instruction and educational activities for their children in place of our formal schooling. So, what's involved in the application process is for them to submit details on their selected educational program, and demonstrate to us how it meets grade level standards. So, if a family submits an incomplete application, then it's my job to just work with the family to help them better understand the requirements, so that they can pursue a home education program, which is, you know, which is their wish. So, all of those, all of the families who are on the list in front of you have demonstrated a request to pursue a home education program. I've reviewed their applications, and from my perspective, all of those applicants meet the state standards and would provide a valuable educational experience for their children. And so, I just turn it over to the school committee to vote as to whether or not they would like to solve.
Okay, great, thank you. And I just want to let everybody know, Ms. Minahan placed an updated list in front of everybody, there's one additional one at the back, if, just so that's the one we're gonna go off of. So, I'll just be looking for a motion to approve the recommended home education programs for this school year as recommended by Dr. Robbins.
I'll make the motion.
Any second?
I'll start that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you, James. Reporter of the Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Schaefer.
So, as we sat down, you know, Danielle asked me, was today a good day on a scale of one to 10 compared to other years? And I, I would, I'm gonna call it an eight or a nine. I only say that because perfect never exists, but you always strive for perfection. Today was a good day. It wasn't perfect. There are apt-to-be, you know, people that are looking for class assignments, or bus routes, or bus tags, or, that's gonna happen when you've got almost 2,200 people, kids coming to school, and you've got 180 or so teachers, and then another couple of hundred staff members who all come together on the first day of school. But it was a really good day. I got up and there was pouring rain, and there was thunder and lightning, and I couldn't believe it. I brought an extra pair of shoes in case my feet got wet, and I was gonna have a long day, but I forgot my suit coat, so I'm sorry. I didn't need the shoes because, you know, worried about the kids at bus stops, and, you know, people always want to drop their kids right at the door when it's raining, which is, you know, their choice, but it slows everything down, and it just miraculously stopped raining as the high school opened this morning. The clouds, you know, cleared, and the sun came out, and I think we even had a rainbow. And the nice piece, it's a nice way to start, especially coming out of two years where things were so disruptive, and so difficult for everybody. It's like a breath of fresh air to come back to school this way, and I think that that showed today. While all of those things were going on at each of the buildings, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into this, the devil is in the detail. I mean, if you're a guidance counselor, every time the bell rings, you're hoping that the students find their way to A Room someplace, because you, you're working on the computer, and you're putting kids in different classrooms, and you don't know until the first day, and you work through that. That doesn't mean everybody got everything they want on their schedules, but that went well. And the transportation piece, Felicia's gonna talk about it a little bit, so I don't want to steal that from her. But while all of the things took place this summer that James and Chris just described, all of those people, office staffs, everyone involved to make that happen the way that it did, buildings were prepared. We hired, and vetted, interviewed, reference checks, background checks, all of the new staff members that we have. Class assignments were made, schedules were made, new registrations, people migrated in and out of the system. The food service program had to get its operation up and running, transportation, the assigning of students to buses, pickup locations and routes, payroll changes that take place with the number of people that are employed here, and there were materials that were ordered, and supplies that were distributed for classrooms. And as I walked through the classrooms before we opened, you know, we had an open house, I was just so excited by the work that our teachers did. I said it this morning, as I walked through the Beaverbrook, I want to go back to school again, because in walking down this hallway, the floors are sparkling, the rooms are beautiful, and everybody's smiling as I walk by them. I mean, for an educator, it must be kind of like what heaven must look like, when you shuffle off, you know, like the Beaverbrook on opening day. And if that's true, that's gonna be awesome. So, I would also like to thank some people, the way that James did, I want to answer any questions you have. We have a couple of other hurdles with this opening to go. Before I thank the people, I'm gonna mention this probably later in the agenda, we need to talk about a couple of times. So, the busing, Felicia's gonna talk about it, I don't want to steal that, but that always gets better with time. The traffic in and out of buildings was better today than I, than any other year I remember. We hope that that continues. You know, we had a senior breakfast this morning that may have helped with that, because a lot of the high school kids were in earlier. That will work itself out as people decide where to pick up and to drop off their children. I would suggest, if you're picking up and dropping off your children, you schedule regular meeting places where you're gonna drop them off and pick them up. It doesn't have to be exactly at the door, you can, you can pick alternative places around the building. And that'll, that'll speed things up for your family and for everybody else. If you are gonna get in the line, we ask that people pull all the way up to the front, and then open the door, that will help a lot. It's what we've been doing when we go to Logan for the last lifetime, that is worse than anything I've, I can, you know, describe in Abington. But that's the best way to do that. So, those things will work themselves out. But I need to thank Jason Lynn and our maintenance department, I need to thank Gene Conan and the food service people, Rich Baikowski and the, and the technology office, and the number of devices that are restored and redistributed and to make everything work is, it's amazing, the work that they do with three people in that office. The administrative assistants at each building, who, you know, when you call Abington, that somebody answers the phone. I don't know, that doesn't happen these days. It happens where, where we live and work, I'm proud of that, and that people, you're not, you're not lost in some phone line somewhere. Gail, Colleen, and Deb, who helped put all that busing information together, our custodian, our building crews, our building level administrators, our central office staff, the police department. We had some discussions at the end of last year, we're gonna continue our discussions around school safety, but having our police officers around today was appreciated, it just, it just, everything... just, it just, everything that, we had so many police officers around today, maybe that's what helped with some of the tariffed flow, especially around this building. Fire Department helped us quite a bit with our opening and our inspections. The building department also helped us. The DPW, John Stone and those crews, you know, they do amazing work for us and they help us quite a bit. The library helps us out, supporting our readers over the summer. They help us out all year. But when, when, if you didn't go to the summer program, or if you were in the summer program, the library was there for people. The PTOs provided lunch for our staffs. That's, that's so appreciated. It's just, it's nice to be in a place where there's so many people supporting and varieties of stakeholders, or varieties of people, parents, and that are, that are supporting our teachers and our paraprofessionals and our tutors. The bus drivers, I, like Chris did, I need to thank all of you. You're getting paid a lot of money for this job that you do. You get zero money. You're volunteering your time and your attention to the detail and the, and the things that we talk about is important. I need to thank our families. I need to thank, the most important thing we do is, goes on in classrooms with our teachers, our paraprofessionals, and our tutors. But none of the things that they do would, would really be successful without all these pieces coming together behind them. And so, you know, my report is, is a giant thank you card, but it's, but it speaks to the number of things. My point in thanking those people is to thank them, but also that people realize the number of things that have to come together for all of this to work for a day like today, which was a good day. And most importantly, you send us really great kids. I mean, it's just so much fun, you know, to get so energized when the teachers show up, and then on top of that, you get, you know, more energy when the purpose for you getting out of bed in the morning comes to enjoy or be a part of a school day. So anyway, I want to answer any questions, and that's what happened today.
How many vacancies do we have throughout the system, and how does it compare to other years? I know, obviously, it's tough in other areas right now.
We've been talking about that, and we estimated that there are about 80 people in new positions. That doesn't mean they're new to the district, because there were some, there were some dominos that fell. So, for example, Chris, in his position, Dr. Boss is an example. He got his position, and then at the Beaver Brook, we've got interim people in succession, and then classroom teachers in succession. So all told, though, those are all new people in new positions. So about 80 people in new positions in Abington. And some of them are new to Abington, and some of them are brand new to the profession. So in terms of teachers or paraprofessionals that are brand new, teachers that are new to the system, we looked at it about a week ago, and I think we were about 35 people that are new to the system. So a lot of the work we're going to be doing this year is supporting those people, making sure that they're given every opportunity to be successful, because if they're not successful, our kids won't be successful. So we need to, we need to make sure that happens. That was, you know, a great question, because obviously there's a lot of change. And the last part of your question was, how does that compare to other places? I think you know, from watching the news, that there are shortages, and there's been a lot of movement. I think some of them for movement. So we, we're, we're not completely staffed yet. There's still some paraprofessional positions that remain, that still need to be filled, a few, but we feel confident those will be filled. And I think some of this was, some of our movement of teachers or people in and out of the district was the number of opportunities that are, that are taking place all over the place. So if you were wanting to work five minutes from your house, or 10 minutes from your house, there was an opportunity. I know that people that commuted long distances were, made that move. We had a number of retirements that added to that. We had that domino effect I described. So I think we're seeing it all over, but we are, we are staffed.
Can I ask you anything? I do not. Thank you, Peter. Moving on, report of the assistant superintendent, Dr. Michellea.
Thank you.
Lot of red over there.
I have the peanuts. First, I do want to talk about buses, busing, bus registration, bus routes, bus times, bus pickups, bus drop off. So I, I have to thank Colleen, Gail, and Deb as well. Colleen and, and Gail worked throughout the summer. Deb helped us the last few weeks to get all our tags out. So yeoman's work to them. That being said, and this number seems to increase every year, we've had over 80 bus applications in the last two weeks. So what that means is, routes are established, because they have to be the beginning of August. Bus applications are due the end of June. We give about four weeks, some time for those people that might have forgot. We send out numerous messages over constant contact and throughout the school year also about bus applications. Bus routes are established. Then we get, you know, 80-plus applications, and we have to then do something with them. And people get pretty upset that they didn't get their bus tag yet, or prior to school opening. If you got us your bus application prior to the middle of August, you were assigned to a bus. If you did it in the last two weeks, you may have just received your bus tag. And that's because it's a puzzle. We fill our buses. We don't have a lot of extra seats on our buses, because that costs money. We have buses that are, we run our routes based on the students that are on the buses. Then we get additional registrations, and we have to plug those students, if we have available seats, onto existing routes and typically existing stops. Then that has to be put into our, into the transportation software. Then a tag needs to be made. The tag then gets mailed and update, or updates get sent to the bus company, and then students get their tags. So it's not as easy as, I applied yesterday, why can't my child be on the bus today? And we need to know where every student is. You need us to know where every student is. You need us to know what bus they're on, and the classroom teachers in the schools to know what bus to put them on in the afternoon. So until that's, that application gets through the process, you don't get your tag. So as of today, I believe we are mostly caught up with the ones that were received last week, and we're still working through those that were received this week. And as soon as your student receives their bus tag, they can ride the bus. Routes the first few weeks always take a long time. They're typically new routes for drivers. As Julie alluded to, everyone, a lot of places are having staffing issues. The bus company is no different. They have a number of substitute drivers right now. They have also a number of people that are in, being trained to be permanent, the permanent drivers, but there are substitute drivers. And every time we make an update to a route, they also have to be looking at their new route to make sure that they've picked up at all the stops. So, and for every time a family takes a picture of their student getting on the bus, or a student's not ready at the bus stop, if the bus pulls up to someone's house and the stop is at the house and the students are inside the door waiting, 30 seconds times 40 kids is a 20-minute addition to the bus route. So please have your child out at the bus stop five minutes before the time that's listed on the tag. And after about two weeks, the routes become much more established. The families may decide not to put their child on the bus anymore. Those students that are mandated for transportation, they get a tag. We'll know those students that aren't being on the bus anymore and may be able to make some changes to the routes. But please be at the stop at five minutes before the time on your tag, and that'll help move that along. I also do want to make sure that people know that on Tuesday is also the first day of kindergarten. So the Beaver Brook routes will be even longer next week. As the other schools get a little faster, Beaver Brook has two days, and then we add a whole third of their bus, of the bus riders. And kindergartners take another, kind of a little closer eye, if you will. So buses will be running late. Students will not be marked late if they come in late on a bus. That was a concern by a few parents this morning. And please be at your child's bus stop in grades K to 2, so the drivers will not let a child off the bus if an adult isn't there to get them. And like I said, after about two weeks, the times are much more established. You'll have a better idea. We have times that we think it's going to take. Traffic has increased the first few weeks of school before community members say, oh yeah, there's school, I'm not going to go down Chestnut, or I'm going to leave five minutes earlier. If I, if I'm off by five minutes coming down 139, I can be behind a bus that makes 15 stops in a mile and a half. So people will make adjustments to their routes, their driving routes also, which will help our buses. So please be patient, and we will get all your children to school and home from school safely, but we have to do, we have to be careful with that.
Great. And if you think there was pictures taken this week for Beaver Brook, wait till Tuesday.
Just wait till next week.
Correct. And you'll talk about the other challenges for Tuesday.
Can we just thank our bus drivers, though? As someone who, that little kid in kindergarten whose legs were barely big enough to get her up the steps, and who was petrified to get to school every day, my bus driver made a world of difference. And it sounds crazy, but Mr. Thomas, wherever you are, you were amazing. And I know people who put that same kind of love and energy and effort into doing that job day in and day out. And we don't see the hard work, because we put our kids on and we go about. So thank you to the bus drivers, because what you do is so vitally important, not just for safety and security and transportation, but for
Relationships.
Relationships with our kids. So thank you.
Thank you. I totally agree. Any other transportation questions? Moving on?
Yeah, go right ahead.
All right, summer, summer facility projects. I too would like to thank Jason Lynn and the maintenance department, our head custodians, Jamie Haie, Aherat 201, Scott Kelkhorst at Beaver Brook, and Mike Russell at the Woodsdale, along with their summer crews. I, I started a list of all of the things that got done this summer, and this is not the whole list, but I won't read it to you, so don't worry. But I have some highlights. The buildings don't look like they do by magic. It's the hard work that our summer crews put in. We have full-time custodians, part-time custodians, and we have student custodians that help in the summer. So I want to thank all of them. And they do much more than make those floors shiny during the summer. Some of the projects that happened this summer in all of our schools, all our water filters were replaced in our filling stations, all air filters were replaced in the air purifiers and on our rooftop units. All Univet filters were replaced and units were lubricated. Furniture was moved to new and appropriate locations. Classroom hallways and stairways were painted as needed. Projectors were replaced as needed. Plumbing repairs were completed, and all floors were cleaned and waxed, and all classrooms received a deep cleaning. And I think you will agree with me that our buildings looked great and were very welcoming to our students and staff, and that, like I said, it doesn't happen overnight. One of the challenges of having all of the summer programs here at the middle high school, we were really concerned about was having all of the programs here and then having a shorter amount of time to, to deep clean those areas. And again, my, my thanks go to Jamie and her crew here, that as soon as summer school ended, they were able to do kind of all the other stuff during summer school, and as soon as summer school ended, they were able to get into, mostly the high school side is where we held our summer programs, and they were able to get in there and, and make everything look great. I also want to mention that this summer, we partnered with the town of Abington and the Green Communities grant, and we upgraded to LED lighting at the Beaver Brook, Woodsdale, and Frollo Gyms, the Woodsdale Cafeteria, and the Woodsdale Kitchen. We also added destratification fans at the Beaver Brook and the Woodsdale that will help with airflow and regulating of temperatures. So I want to thank Liz Shea at Town Hall and the Green Communities group for, for funding those projects. Thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there any update on these side soccer fields?
Great question. You will notice that the fields are coming along. I actually spoke with Pete Servino just the other day. He's happy with the progress that's being made. In the coming weeks, it's going to be aerated and overseeded, and then they'll do another fertilizer application before the winter. And while it looks really good, and, or looks much better, I should say, and we could possibly have light use, it has been recommended that we go through this fall growing season, and then come spring, be able to use it.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
The front lawn is able to be used.
Yep, front lawn, yep.
The geese use it.
Fertilize, there you go.
They have a lot of fertilizer.
Hopefully now that everybody's back, the geese will find another place to
fertilize.
Fertilize.
I wish they went to that field for the fall. And my last update is on the breakfast and lunch program. As you know, as I spoke about in the spring, the federal government did not fund universal free breakfast and lunch this year, but in July, the state of Massachusetts state budget did fund universal free breakfast and lunch to all students across the state. So we will again be offering free breakfast and free lunch to all students. And you, families may be asked to complete free and reduced lunch applications if they believe they were eligible for that. That way they can get into the, to other state systems, or other financial programs in the state that may help them financially. So, but this year, again, because of state funding, we're thankful that lunches and breakfasts are free.
Great. Thank you. I did say.
One other, one other item of note, the last three years, or two and a half years, we haven't required lunch numbers at the Woodsdale and the Beaver Brook. Last year, we started requiring like lunch numbers here at the middle high school. We're going to be rolling out slowly at the Woodsdale, and then we're looking at some systems for Beaver Brook, but to start to use lunch numbers again as a better, as a way to better capture our usage. And if we have, if students have to pay in the following years, they'll have a little bit of experience with that. But that will be slowly rolled out through the fall with lots of communication to families.
Okay, great.
Where do families go if they need their students' lunch number? It's always asked a thousand times. How do they find it?
That's a good question.
It is, yeah, it gets asked.
It's, I don't think it's an ask, but.
I was going to say, the school secretary.
Yeah, the admin assistants, and they can get it at the, in the lunch line, too. It just takes a long time.
Yep, right.
But if they don't know it, if they're, for example, if they come in in the morning, the cafeteria is open and the registers are open, and it's less busy than during the day, so I would suggest that's the first stop.
Can I ask a couple of questions? Can kids get a second lunch for free as well?
They cannot. They, good question. They can get one lunch, and they have to pay also for the snack window at the, at the high school.
Right, okay. So you still have to put money into the account?
If you're going to be getting those things, yep.
Like water is not?
Correct, yep.
But you could get a second lunch if you paid for it.
Right, yep.
Okay, you paid for it. Awesome. Good to know.
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michellea. Next up, establishment of next school committee meeting date. For now, it's going to be to be determined. It was originally scheduled for September 27th. However, the Board of Selectmen have called for a special town meeting that night, so we're going to get together and try to figure out a date that works best for all of us, and it'll be communicated as soon as we know. Probably, I'd say anywhere between the week before, that's the week after, or anywhere in between will probably be where it falls. So just stay tuned for that. The information on it is, I'm going to take the first one. The first annual Deirdre Volunteer Service Award recipient, given by the townwide PTO, it was awarded to Pam Neely the end of last school year, I believe it was. I just want to take this, because having known Deirdre since the center school PTO personally, and knowing Pam the way I have since the time I met her, I can't think of anyone more deserving for it. So I want to congratulate Pam on that award. Also, I just want to mention the other nominees for it were Rachel Collins, Melissa Merrick, Susan Na- Susan Nash, Katie Williamson, and Melanie Whitney. So congratulations to all the nominees, and congratulations again to Pam. So, thank you, and do you want?
Could I do?
Yeah.
Quick, so quick touch on this. There's also information in your packet about the MASC, MAS joint conference on November 2nd through the 5th. Wendy has already indicated a desire to go. More people could go if they, if they wanted to, and just as we have somebody going, there's historically an assembly of delegates from each committee, and you, and if it's Wendy because she's going, or if there's other people that are going, you can decide who your delegate will be in that assembly. And what I'll, what has happened historically, I don't know for sure that'll happen this year, is I'll get a list of questions from MASC, your professional organization, for them to consider at the delegate assembly. Generally, it's items around things they want to propose to the legislature for schools, and this is, this, if, if this happens again, like it has in the past, this is your opportunity for this committee to voice its wishes at that delegate assembly through your delegate. And so more to come on that. I would give you all that information when it becomes available, and information on the meeting is in your packet.
And if you're interested in going, you should reach out to Mrs. Minihan?
Yes, please.
Okay.
You've got the school committee meeting dates, and you already have to change the next one. The other thing I want to mention, and I'm, do you mind if I do the election piece?
I was going to do it.
Okay, go for it.
And also in there is our subcommittees for the upcoming school year. I think most of you have them already, but they're there for everybody. Some days to remember, Friday, there's no school for students. I don't know if offices are open or not on Friday.
I think they are.
Friday, Friday, sorry, I was looking at Labor Day.
Monday, September 5th, Labor Day, all offices are closed and no school. On Tuesday, September 6th, the early education program here begins, as well as kindergarten, as we mentioned. And also to throw a further monkey wrench in Beaver Brook's plans, the state primary is on Tuesday, and the Beaver Brook Back Gym is a location for the election. The way I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, is that's the only entrance and exit for anybody voting will be through that back Beaver Brook gym, correct?
Exactly.
How are, are people holding signs? How does that work?
There's a 150-foot, or is it yard, perimeter? There's a perimeter, there's a circle, and people can't go anywhere near, on the inside of that from the election site, but then also they will most likely be on Ralph Hamlin Lane.
Agreed.
Because of the parking situation, they've taken what was the tennis courts, and they've created parking there. And so the best opportunity for those people will be probably along.
But they won't be able to be on, like if you, if you park in those front spots in front of Beaver Brook, they can't be on that grass between those spots and the building, right? Because in the town, in the town election on the Saturday in September, like when nobody's here, that's kind of where people were, and it didn't matter because nobody was here.
We've got a commitment from Minihan, our, our town clerk, to keep tho, that, that separate from our students, that students shouldn't have to interact in any way with, with any of that. And actually, if you, if you think about the layout of the Beaver Brook, that's where the buses come in, in that, in that front area.
Correct, yes.
And the students are really, you know, dropped off in the back where they'd have, whether they'll have little or no contact
Okay.
With the election.
Looking at the green calendar on packet, I answered my next question about the actual election day, so there is no school for students on that day, just so everybody knows ahead of time. If any, any further questions on how that works? Can I ask people to reach out to you about it?
Yeah, and I want to, yeah, and I want to thank Cable and the clerk's office for trying to get information out in advance so that voters know what to expect. And, you know, they're working on signage and police officers and the people that work at the election in terms of directing people where they can go. So we're, you know, we've tried to blitz the, the parents who are bringing kindergartners, you know, about where they pick up and drop off on that day so they don't get in that, in that queue. And we're trying to obviously push the election people to the other side of the building, and hopefully that information's out there.
Okay, very, great, thank you.
Can you, can I just add, though, that voters should enter on Ralph Hamlin?
Yes, yes.
The, the exit closest to the Folio.
Yeah.
Or the entry road. That's how you'll get down to the parking.
We talked a lot about trying to make sure there's somebody at the head of that driveway to the Beaver Brook, and a sign up there to tell people that are coming to vote, do not get in the school traffic to vote.
Can the police department help us out there?
They are going to help, they said they're going to help us out with that.
Okay, great, thank you. Wednesday, September 7th, Greenway Boosers meeting at 7:00 PM, I'm guessing here.
I believe it's in the cafeteria.
Okay, all right, in the cafeteria. Sunday, September 18th, two things. The first annual Abington Copes Road Race and Walk, Woodsdale School at 9:00 AM. Those of you may remember that, that's when the Coombs race used to be. The Coombs race finished up last year. This has now taken its spot for its first annual, beginning this year. Also at 10:00 AM at the middle high school, the Music Parents Craft Fair begins. On Thursday, September 22nd, an in-service half-day for students. And as mentioned, Tuesday, September 27th, a special town meeting will be here in the auditorium. Anybody, anybody else have missed anything? All right, so with that said, I'll be looking to go into executive session by roll call vote for the purposes of presenting updates on negotiations with the Abington Education Association, Units A and B, and discussion of the assistant superintendent's contract, and not to return to regular session. I will start with a yes.
Yes.
Hi, Wendy?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
We are done for here. Thank you very much.